Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock and time to begin our Planning Commission meeting on January the fourteenth. Item, the first item, first thing that we'll do is have our invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be given by Commissioner Davis and flag salute will be led by Commissioner Doggett. Would you please stand?
Father God, we thank you so much for all your blessings. Lord, as we go through and make decisions about your landlord, let us be wise stewards, find the proper things to do with it. Lord, we pray for our troops, that they be safe, out of harm's way, all over. Pray for our leaders, that they can make the right decisions. May she would heaven do. Pray these things in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Call the roll, please.
Terry.
Here.
Erlene.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
Larry.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the December tenth meeting. Do we have any corrections or is there a motion?
I've got one on number six.
Okay.
It's number six. Well, wait a minute, it says there's five and then it goes to seven. Anyway, it has to... Well, I tell you what, go to the page where number seven is, up there in the last paragraph. It just, it says, "I move that this item be recommended, this item be item approved." So I didn't know if one of those words need to be taken out. Actually, not recommended because we just approved that.
So just a clerical error?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other corrections? We have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, the corrected version of the minutes of December tenth. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Erlene.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes. Item two is the visitors. If there's anyone here that's not on the agenda tonight, seeing none, we will proceed. As we did last meeting, we have three items that have quite lengthy legal descriptions and our attorney has volunteered to read those for us. So, item three is a request by Crafton Toll &amp; Associates. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a request by Crafton Toll &amp; Associates to rezone from C4 Planned Shopping Center District to C3 PUD Restricted Commercial District Planned Unit Development. A tract of land situated, or should be situated, within a portion of the southeast quarter of Section nineteen, Township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian in the city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, being more particularly described by meets and bounds as follows. Commencing at the southeast corner of said southeast quarter at chiseled X found in place, thence north, zero degrees, five minutes, thirty seconds west along the east line of said southeast quarter, a distance of one thousand one hundred ninety-seven point zero three feet, thence south, eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, thirty seconds west, a distance of sixty feet to a point on the present westerly right-of-way line of State Highway ninety-two, AKA Garth Brooks Boulevard, being the point of beginning, thence south, eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, thirty seconds west along the south line of said tract herein described, being said coincident with the north line of Block two of First National Office Park, Section two, filed in the office of the Canadian County Recorder in Book eight, page one fifty-one, a distance of four hundred and eighty-three point ninety-six feet to a three-eighth iron bar stamped, Hail Buckley, found in place, further described as being a point on the east line of Block one of Stone Creek Edition, filed in the office of the Canadian County Recorder in Book eight, Book three fifty-four, thence north, zero degrees, five minutes, thirty seconds west along the west line of said tract herein described, a distance of four hundred twenty-six point seventy-four feet to the northwest corner being coincident with the northeast corner of said Stone Creek Edition, marked by a three-eighth iron bar stamped, LS one-five-one-zero, found in place, thence north, eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, thirty seconds east along the north line of said tract herein described, a distance of two oh five point zero eight feet to a point, thence north, zero degrees, five minutes, thirty seconds west, a distance of twenty-two point seventy-two feet to the southwest corner of Lot one, Block two of the Garth Brooks Commercial Park Phase Three, filed in the office of the Canadian County Recorder in Book nine, page two fifty-one, marked by a three-eighth iron bar stamped, LS one-five-one-zero, found in place, thence north, eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, thirty seconds east along the north line of said tract herein described, same being coincident with the south line of said Lot one, Block two, a distance of two hundred and seventy-eight point eighty-eight feet to the northeast corner of said tract, same being the southeast corner of said Lot one, Block two, and a point on said present westerly right-of-way line of State Highway ninety-two, AKA Garth Brooks Boulevard, thence south, zero degrees, five minutes, thirty seconds east along the east line of said tract herein described, a distance of four hundred forty-nine point forty-six feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains two, one, two, or two hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-three square feet, four point eight eight six seven acres, more or less, basis of bearing, south, zero degrees, five minutes, thirty seconds east, the east line of the southeast quarter of Section nineteen, Township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian.
Thank you, Mr. Osby.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have someone here that's here to talk about this for us?
Good evening. My name is Chris Gray with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. Happy to be here this evening to talk about this project. We have been working with the city over the last several years on the development of the Garth Brooks Commercial Development along this area and are here tonight to accomplish a couple of things together. One, we are trying to rezone the property from C4 to C3 as the current property surrounded is zoned, and then bring in a PUD zoning overlay to further define the development regulations that would be applicable for this development. And then a third item that is with this application is a final plat that would divide this particular property into three lots. Happy to answer any questions. I have received the staff report and be glad to talk about any of those items that you may have concerns about.
I've got one question. Maybe Mark can answer this, but since it says just Garth Brooks Commercial Park, is, would it, would, would we have any conflict with Garth Brooks since we don't call it Garth Brooks Boulevard?
I wouldn't see any.
You don't think he'd come back and...
No, I mean, since it's, I was looking for its, I mean, it's already, I don't know if there's other phases, but since it says Garth Brooks Commercial Park, I think we're in good shape.
And what we're talking about on this item is the rezoning?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, to C3.
And what do y'all, what do y'all plan to do with the, what's gonna go on? What's gonna happen to this property?
The intent of this application is to take a square piece of property that's approximately five acres, a little less than five acres, and make it so that it has similar development potential as the neighboring properties that have developed in this area. The acreage happened to be just under five acres, whereas the minimum development area for C4 was five acres. So we had a conflict where we needed to rezone. In consequence, this piece of property is a little bit deeper than the property to the north, and so to make it consistent with lot sizes, a third lot was introduced in the rear, which would be accessed by a private access easement. We've worked with your staff regarding this approach and the staff has indicated they were supportive of this approach.
That property in the back, we'll have access to it from Garth Brooks or will it be from abandonment?
All three of the properties, all three of the lots will take an access to Garth Brook Boulevard, Garth Brooks Boulevard, through the private access easement.
Questions by the commission on the rezoning? So this is just to match the other zoning that's already in place?
Yes, sir.
So we're downzoning one, one step. I guess we're downzoning, yeah, from C5, oh, C3, we're downzoning two steps, so. Any questions or any comments or do we have a motion?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
In the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Crafton Toll, we've read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the City Council, including any requirements and restrictions approved through the accompanying commercial PUD.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Motion second. Any further comments or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Terry.
Yes.
Erlene.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes. Okay. Item four, Mr. Attorney, do we have to read all that again?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have to. I mean, it's the same piece of property. I think if we'll just read the intro paragraph so we know what we're doing.
All right. Item four is to hear a request by Crafton Toll &amp; Associates to C3-PUD Restricted Commercial District Planned Development Unit, a tract of land. And as I said earlier before the meeting starting, this is across the street from the old high school. It's just south of Christian Brothers Automotive, if anybody wants to know where it's really at. And we're not going to read all of this into the record. We will just place it in the record. It is exactly the same piece and everything that the attorney read on the item three. You might, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, this is a PUD, commercial PUD overlay application where we are modifying and restricting the development regulations for this property with the underlying use of, the uses allowed in C3. Staff has recommended some additional uses that should be added to the list of restrictions, prohibited uses. We are in agreement with these additional restrictions. There are several recommendations for clarification within the PUD document. So we are in support of making those changes. One of the other items that I think the staff had some questions about and wanted some discussion with the planning commissioners was regarding to signage. The PUD as presented is requesting three signs with a maximum height of twenty-five feet. The property is unique and it has three separate lots and the reason that we are coming in and asking for three lot signs is for, one for each lot. We are open to reducing the sign height to fifteen to twenty feet. In our PUD application, we have restricted this display area to two hundred square feet and...
So all three signs would be located on Garth Brooks, even for the back property? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think your sign should be any higher than what the other people have on there, myself. They'd be coming back asking for a higher signage. What, Mitchell, what are the standard height? It's about fifteen to twenty feet on what is already there?
Well, actually, the standard height is thirty-five, but what we're talking about is reducing the height to be comparable to what's to the north as well. And what she was recommending is one monument sign for the whole thing, and he's asking for three separate ones. And I think he wants to reduce the height to twenty feet.
Oh, so the staff was only wanting one sign through there?
Well, yes, but it's also, there's not really a requirement or a mandate that they only have one. And that's why he's asking for variance, but he's willing to give a little bit in the height. We just didn't want a bunch of signs there where you get lost in the signage.
Yeah, I was thinking to myself, that's, that's not a very big spot for three big signs in that short amount of space.
A lot of our signs that we have out there now, right now, are, are just one sign with multiple companies on it, so.
Well, we have, the OEA has a sign and Christian Brothers has one. And then that three-plex there, I don't know what they have. I can't remember.
They've got, they've got one sign, but there's, there's multiple companies on that, just like it is down there south of I-40 where all of those businesses, all their signs are in practically one. I mean, that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to, I'd just like to see one sign because I mean, it just, it gets too busy. I understand what you're saying, where you're wanting those businesses to be able to see, you know, but I really, I'm just, I'm just concerned that as Garth Brooks Boulevard increases, that we'll just have more and more signs.
I think I agree with that. I think I'd like to see one rather than three. It's busy, it's busy with signage up and down that street right now as it is.
But when she's talking about a monument sign, a monument sign to me sounds like it's low, but...
A monument sign is usually a two-legged sign that starts at the ground and goes up from there. The only thing that may be taken consideration, these lots may have more than one use on each lot, so that could be restrictive to that development, too. So I mean, that's something you need to just talk to the owner and the applicant and see what they're really trying to do here.
You want to ask, answer Mitch?
Or if this is something that could be taken up when they actually have a plan, a building, or an actual, somebody wanting to buy it, are you gonna buy it or sell it or what are you planning on doing to the property?
These lots would have the potential of being sold, yes, sir.
So, we don't have, we've never done anything with our signed ordinance officially yet, have we?
No, we have not. To reopen up, the question is signs or more signs, we'd have to open the PUD up and we'd have to bring that application through the Planning Commission as well as the City Council if they, if you so approve one sign or one type of sign, they want to change that signage.
Like Mitchell was talking about, in these, in these, how many buildings, three buildings? Four buildings?
There would be three lots.
Three lots, okay. So you could have multiple businesses?
Yes, sir.
In each one of those buildings?
Yes.
Do you know what would be the maximum just for each building? Or is that, can you say that?
It depends. If it went kind of a strip retail, it could be divided several different lease pays.
So there could be more than one tenant in one building? Be multiple tenants in one building?
Yeah, they could even park on the back side if you're gonna have a lot in the back. The buildings don't necessarily, wouldn't have to be facing on Garth Brooks. I mean, the businesses, they could have a building with frontage and then on the back side, 'cause they're gonna have parking out there for the back lot anyway, so. Could be a lot of things.
I think that, I think that we would be open to, to the, the single sign, but I think we would need some flexibility with the display area, given that there could be multiple tenants. It is something that if, if the commission chooses, I think, to approve of the PUD as it's submitted, it does allow for, when a site plan, a building permit is presented, it requires a specific plan approval, which could also include the signage. And at that point, you could have drawings for a sign. I think that, I think that we could, could do the single sign, but I think we would need some additional flexibility on, on increased display area with there are so many shared tenants.
What about two, two signs, kind of one in each, in front of each lot, instead of just one big sign? I mean, that'd be a whopper sign for three lots.
One big sign would?
Yeah, to me it would be.
Well, understanding that, understanding that they could have multiple businesses within just one building, I could see that one sign being pretty, pretty tall. I wish Cindy was here. That's where she could explain what her thoughts were on that. If she took into account of multiple businesses in one building...
Plus, we've got that third lot in the back, not just the two in front.
I don't know how they'd advertise.
Well, that's just my whole point. Maybe the two buildings in front could have one sign and then if they're gonna have multiple businesses in the back, would have a sign for that, maybe two signs.
That's something we could table or not?
Well, we gotta pass this. If we table, we'd have to table the whole motion, correct?
Yep.
But, but the sign is included in this?
If I may, maybe something to consider, we have requested two hundred square foot display area per sign with three signs for the development. If we consolidate into one sign and group the display area that would be for each individual lot on the single sign, we could be looking at something as much as six hundred square feet. So that could give the flexibility for the display area needed for the multiple tenants and also reduce the number of signs that would be on the property.
It'd be like trying to read what's on the movie screen when you go, you know, down there.
Six hundred square feet?
Six hundred square feet would be sixty by ten or whatever, twenty by thirty.
Yeah.
But I'd rather, I'd rather see two signs myself rather than just that one whopper.
Well, on page seven, under the signage with E, like he had said, it says, "No permit for a sign will be given without specific plan approval." So, so Mitchell, would that mean that we would see this again or at least for this, or would they go through your office?
Staff would be basically, the staff would be possibly the planner, maybe maybe even others, depending on what it is.
Okay.
So if we did not address this and when someone came in for a building permit and wanted a certain sign, you'd have to open the PUD again?
No, if you leave it as currently written, or there's three signs in here, it's the current PUD, the way it's written. Now the question becomes, are you going from the three to one or what are we doing?
Well, let's say we had one sign and a person come in, wanted a separate sign.
Then the PUD would have to be reopened if you want a separate monument sign or pole sign. The whole PUD would have to be opened and reevaluated and looked at. Now, if it's a sign on that sign that you allow them, that square footage, then we just look to make sure it meets that requirement.
How much was each sign? Were you wanting two hundred feet on each sign?
Yes, sir. If we come forward with the first, the first building permit that would be requested with this development would be requesting the sign and it could show the display area that would be permitted. So you would, in essence, with the first one, be approving the sign for the development. You wouldn't have to do this two more times additionally.
That's a hard decision to make, not knowing what the building's gonna look like, how many tenants, how many tenant spaces?
Yeah, we don't want...
We don't know if there's three or fifteen businesses in there.
I was just thinking of the area south of forty. I mean, we've got, we've got signs all up and down there on both sides of the street. It doesn't seem to affect my, my problem. To me personally, it doesn't affect me, but there, you know, there's people that have signs right up by I-40 and then as you go on down, there's almost every entrance has signs in it.
Mitchell, do we have, what sign out there that would be two hundred square feet that we could just kind of visualize?
Now, remember, display area is two hundred square feet. That's a hundred per side is what they're talking about, not two hundred on one side.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't think of both sides, okay.
So your sign size is not as great as you think it is.
So that would be, be...
That's a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause when you read in here...
Ten by ten.
Maximum display area is two hundred square feet, so...
A ten by ten is a hundred and then on two sides of it. So that wouldn't be too bad.
And that's the way that we review this, 'cause he's the one that gives the maximum display area.
Now, I don't, I don't see anything in here where it talks about the, where each, if we had three, if we allowed three signs, they would be all the same. You know, maybe someone would have it.
Uniformity?
Yes. I mean, if we'd have, if we'd allow three signs, I would think that would, they at least need to be, look the same, as far as their, their structure.
Why don't we get three signs of no more than two hundred square feet with a maximum height of twenty feet?
That sounds reasonable. I know we've discussed that there are small signs. There, it's a four, by the way, it's a four hundred and fifty-foot run down Garth Brooks Boulevard, it looks like. So there would be two hundred and twenty-four feet between each sign.
Would you see anything where they'd be uniform?
So they're not just all bunched right together?
Yeah.
Motion.
Commissioner Beaver, if, if we had a sign that was, say, ten by ten and a height of twenty feet maximum, and you could put three in there, I don't think it would...
Yeah. I'm changing my idea about that. I think three signs, but now I'm concerned that they'd be, they would be uniformed. Chris, where they'd be uniformed, where they'd be, they'd all look the same. You know, you wouldn't have one that would be, you can't...
Y'all don't even know, and you're asking us to make a decision.
I, I don't, I don't think they would be. I don't think they would be.
Would be what?
They wouldn't, I don't think that they would be uniform signs. This would, this document would allow you to review a specific sign application when it comes in that would complement the, the building and the use that's proposed.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
To give it, to give it a, so that it correctly matches the product, the business.
Again, Mitchell, would that be something that could be looked at when they come in for the permit?
You don't mind adding that verbiage to the signage part, do you? That it has to be similar construction? You don't mind adding that verbiage to the signage part, do you? That it has to be similar construction as?
Well, it would, it would have to come before us, the sign with their building permit is what he's saying. If we didn't, we could ask him to change it at that time, couldn't we?
I'm okay either way.
It'd be nice to add that verbiage into the signage.
Well, you can, I would say where a restaurant wouldn't want a square sign out front.
No, it wouldn't be a square sign. It'd be the material used at the base of the sign or the material that you would use for landscaping around the sign because the sign's going to be a monument sign with color, so the color would have to complement the strip center. Is what we're talking about. Is that not correct?
No, we're, we're back to three signs.
Yes, but each sign needs to complement the building it's presenting.
Right.
Because this is kind of open. They can kind of do a little bit. It does require seventy-five percent or seventy percent of the building to be a brick veneer, rock, stone, or mason air. And no more than thirty percent of EPHUS, stucco, or wood, or cement board. So they're trying to make sure that the building has used in some materials that will withstand this time, so.
And what he, and you're saying the same thing on the sign should be?
Complement the building.
Complement the building, just add those verbiage?
Well, architecturally.
That, that's, that's consistent, uh, that, that I've seen in other communities that they just ask that the materials of the sign are they complement, uh, and they're, they're similar to the architecture of the, of the building.
So would this be a, you say a monument sign, it's a two-legged sign?
Typically a monument sign is a two-legged sign. That's correct, or it looks like a two-legged sign. Because it's a monument, it's designed to be, have two standards typically. Broken Arrow, if you've gone to Broken Arrow, they have monument signs. They come up from the ground. They're not very tall. They're usually about twenty feet to twenty-five feet tall. Uh, Edmund's got some of these. They have two pipe standards. Uh, pole signs are a single sign typically, a single pole. Uh, at, uh, Target, a lot, some of those are monument signs where you've got the wide signs, where you have the multiple
Yeah.
uses in there. Those are monuments.
But in item twelve here where it says staff believes this would be precedent setting and would recommend one monument sign with a maximum height of fifteen to twenty, were you asking for monument signs on the three?
Yes, sir. We can, the sta, the staff has requested that, uh, a restriction of, uh, pole signs. So we can clarify that so that pole sign, signs would be restricted and the other, and the three signs.
Do we want to restrict a single pole sign? I mean, for a sign to be at single pole instead of a monument, double standard sign.
Well, the, the display area that you're giving them.
A ten by ten or a hundred square feet?
A hundred square feet. Would probably, you know, that's something you probably want to talk to him about.
So you're saying safety wise, it needs to be a?
I, I, I wouldn't say safety wise because the poles, whether they're a single pole or a dual pole, they're structurally designed, um, based off of the, the wind loads, whether it's one base or two bases.
But in our, that signing ordinance or whatever we were working on before, wasn't that talking about having two? Two poles?
That was temporary signs mainly.
No, well, it was talking about signage, but it was talking about the type of signage. That there is a pole sign, which is a single pole sign.
Right.
Which doing faces would just cost them a little more money if they want to do that and maybe leave that open, maybe just control the height and let them decide the single pole or two poles.
Okay.
Because in a two-pole system, a monument sign, typically that sign may be one sign, double-faced. Not always. It could be two signs back to back, but a pole sign typically would be two signs on the pole on different sides. So it just deals with the cost, so.
Yeah, I, but what I was getting at was that ordinance that we were working on.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were trying to make it, everything a two-pole.
There is some in that and that has to do with aesthetics, but like I said, the single pole can look like a monument sign too when you're only twenty foot tall.
Well, Erlene, do you have any questions or any comments? I'd like to see a motion that includes allowing the three signs, a hundred square feet of display maximum and a maximum height of say twenty feet. What do the other commissioners, any of y'all?
Did you say a maximum display of a hundred?
Square feet?
Do you mean per side?
A hundred square feet per side.
Oh, per side.
Or two hundred square feet, however you want to say it, whatever's best.
Chris, you said you wanted twenty? Did you say twenty feet?
Yes, sir.
That's what you heard?
Yes, sir.
Said a twenty-five?
Yes, sir. And we can add that the, the materials of the sign would be complementary to the, to the structure, to the building.
Okay. Okay, would someone like to make that motion? See if we can get it all in there? Maybe not.
Chickens. Okay, in, in the PUD application of Garth Brooks Commercial Park Phase Four, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including the, all plans and attachments cited in the staff report dated January eighth, two thousand thirteen. I move this item to be recommended for approval to the city council with the following condition, additional conditions. The developer amend the proposed PUD documents as demonstrated by the bold type of this report as noted subsequently. Revi, revision by the planning commission. Uh, that was number one. Number two, propose a identification signage.
To allow three?
To allow, uh, three monument.
No, just don't, don't, don't say it.
Say just three signs with a maximum height of twenty feet and a maximum display area of two hundred square feet. Each sign would need to be, would need to complement the building.
I would second that motion.
Motion in second. Further discussion or is there anything that needs to be clarified? Mr. Attorney, you okay with this?
Yep.
Call or roll please.
Larry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Erlene?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
And item, uh, five is a request by Kraft, Toll, and Associates for a final plat of the same piece of property, a little over, uh, just under five acre piece of property. And the final plat would include the, the PUD, is that correct? Everything that was discussed tonight?
Same property.
I want to understand if there's only going to be, uh, one curb cut on this?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know, I couldn't tell by the, by the pictures, but will a curb cut be almost directly across the street from a curb cut, curb cut with the school?
I don't believe it's exactly across the street. This, this curb cut that is proposed is, uh, consistent with the preliminary plat that was originally approved. Uh, essentially this, the, the two fronting lots along Garth Brooks Boulevard uh, have the same frontage as the preliminary plat originally did. So we're, we're requesting the same location as shown in the preliminary plat.
Will the private road be between the two lots or is it going to be on one end or the other?
Yes, it'd be in between the two fronting lots.
Mr. Chairman, there is a document in your file that kind of gives you a sketch of the drive layout. And it's actually in the ma, it's in the, uh, P U D, but it gives you kind of an idea of what it's going to look like.
Exhibit C?
Huh?
Exhibit C, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I think that's correct. Exhibit B.
Okay, I was looking at exhibit C where it actually shows the curb cut at the school.
Yeah.
And they're I guess it'd be their proposed cut. Yeah. Is, is it, is it better to have curb cuts directly across from each other or kind of offset like these are?
Because of the way the property is situated and because of the situation across the street, it's about the only way that they could do this and make it a viable, uh, uh, development. Because if not, you'd look at, at the aerial, the offset was going to be way greater. And the opportunity for them to develop the parcel or parcels to their full development would be kind of hard to, uh, meet those requirements. But if you can look at the, the zoning map that's included in there, there's an aerial in there.
Mm-hmm.
It does show you the driveway across from that.
So what we're looking at, we're looking at the drive that, that separates the school from the curpatrick.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then if you'll look where their drive would be, it'd be approximate, where the C four zoning is situated with the number?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
There's a brown spot there. It's roughly
Yeah.
that location.
So it's not directly across from it?
Mm-mm.
Y'all do realize that that school is, uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders? And that it's a hundred percent delivery by parents, uh, and, and/or school buses?
Yes, sir. I think that, uh, I think that's why staff has, uh, restricted our ability to access Garth Brooks Boulevard with more than, than one drive to help control attorney matters.
One of the things that we've also asked them to do is close up the access easement to the well. That well has now been plugged. So that is one of the things while they're doing this, that curb cut will be closed.
That's the one by Christian Brothers?
That's correct, on the, on the south side.
South side of Christian Brothers Automotive there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's good. Okay.
I have a question on something I caught on exhibit B. On the west side, you're showing a ten-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot sight proof fence. Uh, and on the plat, it doesn't show anything there.
Yes, sir.
Recol them to?
No, that's actually in the P U D requirements. When that lot is developed, that fence will be installed with that landscape buffer if you're talking along that west boundary.
Okay, so they don't have to put it on the plat?
No, not on the plat, no, because it's part of the P U D overlay district.
And the business will always have to keep it up, correct?
That's correct because that'd be part of the P U D requirements. So once it's installed, that business is responsible for maintenance of that. But it won't be installed until that lot is developed. Lot three. That's my understanding, right?
Yes, sir.
And the reason we didn't want them to put it on the plat, that's actually not a plat, uh, easement. It's more of a conservation easement or a maintenance easement or a, uh, site maintenance type deal. So we didn't really want that filed as an easement on the plat.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? If not, someone to read the draft motion?
I'd make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
If I may. In the case of the application for a final plat submitted by Kraft and Toll and Associates, we've read the staff report, received testimony at the public hearing, find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the, uh, staff reports. I move this item to be recommended for approval to the city with, uh, no revisions.
City council.
I'm sorry, city council.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Got a motion in second to approve the final plat. Is there any further discussions, comments, or?
Might, might I ask clarification of, of Mr. Doggett? When you say no revisions, w- we're making the revisions that are in the staff report though?
Uh, yes, my mistake. That's certainly correct.
So you, your rec, your motion would be just as recommended for approval by the staff?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
With revisions as noted in the staff.
Right.
Okay. Do we have it? I'm sorry, did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, further comments? Call or roll please.
Larry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Erlene?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to having that developed for our city. Appreciate you investing in the city.
Now, thank you.
Item six is new business?
Mr. Chairman, we have no new business.
Item seven is open discussion. Anybody have anything they want to talk about?
Why are we having such lengthy item descriptions now? Is it, is it something that?
That is the legal of the property, so the legal of the property has to be posted on the agenda, so.
Okay. I mean, we've done these things before, but.
This, this legal was quite in-depth if you look at it.
Because we had that same thing for the sign, signage last, last month, and so I didn't know if this is something that.
The, the legal that we had was appropriate. We had talked to the attorney and tried to reduce that and we did.
They're not plat, if they're not planted into lots and blocks, then they'd.
Though which?
If they're, if they're not a plat with lots and blocks, there's a original legal description, they're likely to be quite.
But on the billboard signs, they were in section, township, and range, so that helped because the owner of the property owned a greater piece of the land. Because if not, that would have been a bigger legal than this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other discussion? Next meeting is, uh, February the eleventh and this meeting is adjourned.